The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidia.com.
Peter Angelini, Chairman of Legal Affairs. I'm joined this evening.
Peter Schumacher.
Yes, I'm joined this evening by a second member, a third member of Legal Affairs, Todd Deacon. The second member is out sick this evening. Chief, invite you and the deputy in perhaps, and I'll read the petition. C 35. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested that the following section of the City of Lemonster revise ordinances, Chapter 8, Fire Protection, Section 8-19, Fees for Ambulance Service. A. The Chief of the Fire Department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city in-town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 150% of such charges for basic life support, BLS, service, and an additional 150% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS, service. The Chief of the Fire Department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly, and the fee to be charged in the city collector shall bill, and I think that's a typo, bill and collect the same. The word "collect" is spelled incorrectly. B amended to the following. The Chief of the Fire Department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city in-town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 250% of such charges for basic life support, BLS, service, and an additional 250% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS, service. The Chief of the Fire Department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of persons transported monthly, and the fee to be charged in the city collector shall bill and collect the same. This was given regular course on the 12th, and again, this is a public hearing this evening. I'd like to welcome Chief Sidlow here.
Thank you.
And Deputy Long. Good evening, gentlemen. Chief, would you like to begin by giving us a basic overview of your intentions here and how this program is going to work?
Sure. A number of years ago, the City Council changed the billing to, it used to be just a flat rate, and previous to me being chief, they changed it to Medicare plus 100%. The idea was when Medicare went up, the bills, you know, the revenue would always be tied to it and increase. So when I became chief, we were running one staffed ambulance, and the city grew and we needed to run two. So working with the mayor at the time in the, you know, the city, was if we raised the rates and we could establish that we would bring this revenue in over a three-year period, they liked to do things, you know, to show that it wasn't just a one-year fluke, that, you know, trial period for three years. So we raised the rates to Medicare plus 150%, and the revenues were used to staff the second ambulance. So now the city has two ambulances staffed 24/7 with firefighter EMTs. What I'd like to do is to raise the rates to Medicare plus 250%, and the revenues gained would help pay for the paramedic program, continue to staff the two BLS ambulances, and maybe at some point, because we keep getting busier, we may need to do a part-time third ambulance in future years. So the feeling was when the rates were raised and tied to the Medicare, that the Medicare participants, their bills would be the Medicare rate set by the federal government, which some years increases, some years does not. Sometimes the increases are not that much. And so the Medicare people would pay their, you know, basically their Medicare rate. The increase that we talk about is on the commercial insurance side of the billing. So when we raised the rates from Medicare to medic, you know, charge Medicare plus 250%, it's the 26% or so payees that their health insurance, private health insurance, that's where the most of the rate increase comes from. When this was adopted by the City Council way back, the model was chosen because the, the people who have commercial insurance would have like a copay or a deductible, and that shouldn't change with our increases. It may change if their policy increases, but when our rates, you know, with the Medicare plus 250, is the user is not going to end up paying that fee. It's the, it's the insurance company, their deductible should stay the same. So basically, the City Council way back, it was third-party billing, I think is the correct term, and some of the councils were familiar with it because their businesses, you know, they were, they were more of an expert than, you know, the fire was. So anyway, so we're proposing to go from Medicare plus 150% to Medicare plus 250%. One of the things with Medicare too is it hasn't always caught, kept up with the cost of living, which back when the City Council adopted Medicare plus 100%, they thought that they'd never have to raise them again. So what they, what we found out is Medicare really hasn't increased to keep up with times. Medicare plus 250%, the reason that we chose that, that brings us in line with the communities in our area. Right now, we're below the Townsend, Holden, Gardner, Clinton, communities in our, in our Northwestern County area that some of them provide BLS and some of them, you know, provide ALS. But this would bring us more up to what they're charging, and some of the way that they set their rates is not Medicare plus 250. They basically, is they adjust their rates just to keep up with the rest of the other communities. I also reached out through, through Air Fire, is the area that their, their communities that they get involved with, like Littleton Air, down as far as Belmont and everything, is we're on the lower end. So raising to Medicare 250 brings us up to the middle. We're certainly not going to be at the top. We're going to be in the middle with the Medicare 250.
Chief, could I, when you use the term, and I know, you know, we've been discussing this for some time.
Yeah.
So we're more familiar, but for someone that's watching this evening, when you use the term Medicare plus 250%, I think a person would, would get an image that that bill is going to be too, you know, astronomical. But you, based on the available Medicare code now, what would the out-of-pocket be for a Medicare A and B policyholder?
So, so the Medicare rate, which took effect January 1st, I believe it's the first, but is, is changing right now. For a BLS level is $443.01. So that rate plus the 250% would be, we'd be charging the commercial insurance $1,550.54. The Medicare user would be charged the $443.01. They'd receive the bill, but Medicare will only pay, you know, the $443.01. And what Medicare does is they pay 80% of that $443. So according to our billing company, most of the people that we transport that are on Medicare do not have the supplemental policy that pays the 20% that they wrote. So most, most of the Medicare people that we transport in the city, right now, they get, they end up having to pay their portion of the Medicare's $83.95. With the new rate, it's going to go up to $88.60, which is $4.65 increase. That's going to increase to the Medicare user regardless if the city raises the rates or not, because the Medicare rates have gone up in, in January. But the normal person is paying out-of-pocket around $88.
Okay.
Medicare person.
Medicare part A. Yes, that's an, an increase of $4.65.
Correct, from what they're paying now.
Okay.
According to our ambulance billing company is, there are some people that have the supplement that that pays for the 20%. And then we found out there's some other people that buy Medicare replacement plans, which their rates will be a little higher. But there, there are, obviously, they're buying it from like a private insurance company. So I, I think, I think that they're getting a better insurance for longer-term care from that, you know, insurance provider. There must be something that's attracting them to, to buy these replacement plans. So they may have to pay more out-of-pocket for the ambulance, but I think it's their choice because down the road, if they hospitalized and, and, you know, want to choose their doctor or whatever through their health plan, it's a benefit.
And that's a little different with each provider?
You're correct.
Okay.
Correct. To be truthful, the ambulance billing is the hardest thing I have to deal with. And when we talk to the ambulance billing experts, they say the same thing to us, that it, it, there's not one, it's, you just can't sit here and say one, you know, there's one plan out there and this is the charge. But I'm pretty confident to say through the history that by the city raising the rates, it's going to impact the commercial providers, the commercial users, which is auto insure, you know, auto accidents and, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, does the C employee, if I have to take the ambulance, I pay the higher rate, but then through my policy, I have a deductible where it's $150 or whatever our policy is. And then Mass Health is the other big, and Mass Health, they actually just raised their rates, and I can't remember the last time they did, but Mass Health is our other big, you know, payer. So City of Lemonster, our payer mix is, is, it was around 70 a few years ago, and through COVID, I think a lot of lost jobs and everything, is our payer mix, the last, in 2021, when it finished, was 74%, meaning 74% of the revenue comes from either Medicare or Mass Health or one of the Medicare products. And then the 26% is the commercial. So when we raise our rates, it's basically on the, so, and, and this is, this is similar to any other community, even though their rates may not say Medicare plus 250%. If they're, whatever they're charging more for Medicare, is they're only getting that off of their commercial providers, you know, and depending on your community, you know, community that has more people on health insurance, the payer mix is less. A community that's poor will have a higher payer mix of Medicare, Mass Health, which is challenging for the cities. Like Lemonster is, you know, we're very busy. Our runs went up again. Our total calls for EMS service, and I explained before, like Lift Assist, people lock, you know, stuck in elevators, and then all the medical emergencies. This year, it was 6,800 calls. We transported out of those 5,086, which is up a few hundred more than, than last year. It's like each year, it goes up a few hundred. And out of that, the Fire Department did 4,832. So we rely on a private ambulance company about 250 times to trans, to, you know, both our ambulance is tied up and we need a third one. So it's either a private ambulance or mutual aid that's transporting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just want to stop you right there. I got to start the meeting. Then we'll come, we'll finish up this hearing. We have, and we have a national grid, we'll get to that in a minute, and, and then we'll resume the meeting. So at this time, would you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
I'd now like to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemonster City Council, beginning with Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Ardinger.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Deacon.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. There are eight members present this evening. Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have reviewed the records from the December 12, 2022 meeting, as well as the January 3 organizational meeting 2023. I find them to be both an accurate depiction of the events of each of those meetings, and I'd ask that they be placed on record.
Okay. If there's no objection, we will place the minutes. Councilor Brady.
On the December 12 meeting, I just need a clarification. Under community calendar, okay, it said, "City Clerk provided City Council President with the plat," oh, I'm sorry. "The City Clerk informed the council that the inaugural meeting will be January 3rd, council is to arrive at 6:00, inauguration begins at 6:30," which actually, it was 5:30. It got changed somehow, and I'm just wondering how it got changed.
So the organizational meeting is separate from the inauguration? Is that what you're reading? I don't have.
No. I'm reading that the meeting, the councils were to arrive at 6 o'clock, inauguration itself begins at 6:30.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the mayor's request, so you guys would arrive at 6:00, and then we'd walk up for 6:30?
Okay. Yes. I guess my, my question then turns into, are we just going to flip this every other year? Because in election years, we can't have an organizational meeting before the inauguration.
We, yeah, we could either flip it, we could keep it, or we could do similarly to.
Well, we couldn't keep it, because we wouldn't be sworn in.
If, you just let me continue. If you do it similar to school committee, which is, this is what they do every other year, they have me go up before their meeting, I swear them in before that meeting, so it's legally they're sworn in. They have their organizational meeting, and then they go down to have their ceremony, and then they leave after. That's also an option, because it's considered legal. So it'd be ceremonial at that point, and that's what school committee does. But it's up for discussion. I have no problem with a discussion on it.
Okay. Councilor Frida, you have a question about the minutes as well?
Yeah, I'm looking at January 3rd, where at the end, it says, under the January 3rd meeting, that the naming of the president's committees were that evening. They were not. You clearly stated you didn't feel well, and that you didn't put the committee together, and we didn't get them until the next day. So that shouldn't be part of the record that that evening?
I can take it out. We've always had it included in previous minutes, so I kept with style for the public's benefit.
Previous minutes, and the committees were announced. They weren't this time specifically.
Yeah, I can take it out if you want. It's usually just for a public benefit.
I, I think they should be taken out. It wasn't part of the minutes.
Sure, absolutely. That's fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about any of the two meeting minutes? Seeing then, those changes will be made, and then the minutes will be put on file. Okay. Do we have a motion for a recess so we can continue? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, and a second. Councilor Cormier. All those in favor of entering into recess signify the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, we now stand in recess. And Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, you may proceed with the 6:45 hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, before, before we go on, I just want to nail this down, this, because I think, I sense there's going to be some confusion, because I know a lot of people that have Medicare replacement plans think they have a Medicare supplement plan, and they're two different, in the industry, they're known as Medicare replacement plans. They're subject to a different set of rules than someone who is on Medicare Part A and B with the federal government as the payee, or Medicare as the payee. So for instance, someone with a Medicare replacement plan may get a BLS ambulance ride, receive, receive a bill from the third-party payer, a biller, and it may be a balance of $300 to $350.
Correct.
That they're responsible for. So that's, even though they may be under the impression that they're getting a Medicare rate of $88 or whatever it is.
Correct.
They, they may not. They may get that, that higher rate with an out-of-pocket or a deductible. So I, I just want to clarify that before everyone, you know, over 65 thinks that that's the, that's the rate, the set rate that they'll see as an out-of-pocket fee. So am I, am I accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to add on that, according to the billing company, that's, the majority are Medicare, that have to pay the $88. That the Medicare replacement plans, from what their history is, is not a lot of the, our clients, the bills that we send out.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just wanted to finish quick.
Sure.
You know, sometimes they get long-winded, yeah. So, so the increase, the, you know, all the increase is, is so that we can provide two BLS trucks in the new ALS service. So we're calculating out that the, this will almost self-pay for the city being able to provide two BLS firefighter ambulances and a paramedic chase vehicle with the new ALS service. And just quickly on that, is within two months, it's incredible, we're able to handle most of our calls before we have to call mutual aid or rely on the private. And, and some of the, or a lot of the, not a lot, but there are a lot of calls that we're picking up some very sick people, and the medics are getting there with the fire trucks instead of a delight, and initiating care. And we've had some great success stories, and, and I, I can't say enough how, how great it is that the city has gone this route, so.
Well, thank you, guys. You've done a wonderful job putting this program together, and I, I know you're going to see, we, as you told me, you already saved lives, no question about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And many, many residents will get a second chance at life, and you can't put a price tag on that. That's for darn sure. If you, if you have anything else to add, Chief?
I'm all set unless, Deputy.
Nope.
Thank you, gentlemen. I want to open it up to the third member of my committee.
Yes.
Deacon?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, Chief and Deputy.
Thank you.
I think this is a great step in the right direction. Initially, getting those two up and running, and then the increase, and explaining it to us with the $4 increase through the Medicare. And then looking down the road, because of your calls for service, eventually probably going to a third. And if we need it, that's what we got to do. So thank you for coming down and explaining everything. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members of the council, Councilor Zephyr, Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks very much, both of you, for coming down tonight. This has been a long time coming. I mean, we've been talking about this for a really long time. Second ambulance, you know, the advanced life support services. So I'm thrilled, you know, that it's finally implemented. I do have a question. Do you, do you have an, do you know what the run cost is, or the average run cost? You know, because you're doing revenue projections, right, saying that probably?
Sure. The, when we send a bill out, our average collection is around $400, you know, getting back for the, for that run. The, the cost, if, before we went to the ALS, you know, it takes 16 firefighters to be assigned to the ambulances. So I was using around $100,000 per firefighter, which it covers the retirement cost, health insurance cost, the OPEB cost and everything. So, you know, it would be like $1.6 million for the personnel. And then, you know, every couple of years, we have to buy a $400,000 ambulance. So I was. So, I was figuring that we bring in about two million dollars, and it costs about two million dollars, um, you know, to run the service. And, you know, it'd be two million divided by the five thousand runs.
Okay.
Um, but the, but the thing that I, what gets lost in that, too, is the Lemmonster Fire Department, like a lot of them, is our ambulance crews are trained firefighters, is they're, um, trained in hazmat, structural firefighters. So, thirty percent of the, their calls is also fighting fires, or, you know, looking for lost hikers or rescuing people. So, I did a, I did a, uh, I put together a, a program once, you know, to, like, show the mayor and everything, and, um, I was using seventy percent of that one-point-six million dollars.
Yep.
Is kind of for the EMS side, and then, maybe another thirty. So, when I use, it's like we bring in two million dollars, and we're spending about two million dollars, but the city is also gaining, you know, those, those firefighters.
Okay. I thought I had another question.
I think the numbers kind of work out monster, to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good for now. I might have another question. Thanks.
Councilor Brady, I saw you hand up earlier.
Oh, I do.
Thank you so much for coming, and again, I'll parrot what, um, the councilor to my left has stated. It's a fantastic program. Just a, um, question off the top of my head. Someone calls the ambulance, has no insurance, nothing. Is there a cash discount? Do we give them the four forty-three rate, or do we give them the fifteen fifty rate?
So, if we, if we know they don't have the, the cash, I can, the fire chief can abate it.
Okay.
And we have a process where we, we do. Used to happen more often, but when, um, Massachusetts, everyone is, you know, gets health insurance.
Exactly.
I, it doesn't happen that often. It'll happen, um, someone loses their job, and they're-
In between.
In between, like a carpenter or a construction worker. We've had those. Um, and then, the ones, basically, I'm abating, is if someone deceased, and that eighty-eight dollars is-
You can do it compassionate.
Yeah. So, um, it, not a lot, but, but, um, you know, it's always been the council that wanted the city to abate, and it is there, and we do use it.
And just a, another quick question. Um, I know you, you measured with all surrounding towns. Did you get any sense from gateway cities what they're charging? Are we still in that same ballpark? Meaning, you know, Lawrence, Fitchburg?
Well, anyone, anyone east of four ninety-five is Medicare plus three hundred.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Councilor Ardinger?
I have just a quick question, but thank you for coming down, and your great presentation. And you had mentioned that, uh, when you were at the one-and-a-half Medicare, uh, portion of the charges, that Medicare didn't keep up with what your actual costs were. So, my question is, is two-and-a-half really enough?
Um, so, we're back, you know, when the city council adopted this, the, the thought was that it would. Um, I think at some point down the road, the city council, the city and the city council fire department will be visiting, you know, this again, whether they raise it to, you know, three-hundred percent or, or, or higher, or, or if there's a different mechanism for billing at that time. Um, I, I think for the foreseeable future, it's definitely going to put us in a good position.
Okay. Now, you know, I think, I recollect when you were talking about adding the extra ambulance and stuff out, uh, in the ALS, you had indicated that you were hoping to make it self-sufficient. And that's the, the thing that really sold me on the whole program. You've got a great program.
Yeah.
But, we just want to make sure that it does remain self-sufficient.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think if, I mean, obviously, um, you know, if the city wanted to raise their rates more, but after talking to the comp control or in the mayor, you know, in comparing, two fifty seemed good. But, I guess at any point in time, it can be revisited by the way that the city council's got it structured, that, um, you know, all I, I have to do, because I am supposed to come down here yearly and, and, you know, talk about the rates or whatever, um, which I try to do during my, you know, presentation, but obviously, that it's my responsibility and the comp control and the mayor that if we feel that it needs to be raised, we, we should be down here bringing it before you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That's-
Medicare had the biggest jump that they've, that we've seen, um, this year.
Okay.
But, we take part in a, a reimbursement plan from Medicare every year, where they know that they don't pay enough for the service. So, um, it's quite a lot of paperwork, but we're able to recoup, um, some of that money at the end, and as long as the federal government keeps, you know, having that plan, we can-
Which this past, this past year was three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's a good amount.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Council Frida?
This has been a long time coming. A lot of conversation over the years. I'll agree with the counselor at large, um, next to me. Um, I, I support this. This is something that's, that's certainly needed, and you've done a great job over the years presenting it and working on it. Um, this wasn't, this wasn't done quickly. It's been a long time coming. Let's hope that we don't ever have to worry, as we have in the past, about reimbursements going to the consumer and not, not to the-
Correct, yes.
-municipality. I think that's probably dead right now, but I, I think there's always a chance that that could come back, that argument.
Correct, yes.
Um, but, let's hope that that doesn't happen, because it's, uh, that would certainly be a disaster. We know that. Um, so, thank, thank you, um, and I do support this. A lot of work done over the years, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council? All right. Seeing none, good of the public. Is there anyone this evening in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition in petition C thirty-five? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition C dash thirty-five? And for the final time, third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to C thirty-five? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank the council for your support. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. We now have a six fifty P.M. hearing for public service. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing of the Public Service Committee. Um, my name is Sue Shalfo Zephyr. I am the chair of the Public Service Committee. Uh, Council Frida is the second member, Council Brady, uh, is the third member. And this is relative to petition fifteen dash twenty-three. Massachusetts Electric Company DBA National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Cleveland Street. National Grill to, uh, grid, to install one solely-owned pole on Cleveland Street, beginning at a point approximately one-hundred-and-fifty feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Lancaster Street and Cleveland Street. Install eye pole on Cleveland Street to relieve sag on wires and upgrade infrastructure to eliminate reported flickering. Location approximately is shown on the plan attached. Wherefore it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herein marked Cleveland Street, Lemonster, Massachusetts, number three zero six five two five six nine, November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting publicways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. So, my first question would be, is there anybody here from National Grid this evening? Thank you. Would you please come to the microphone and just, um, give us your name, sir, and if you can, explain what this is all about for the public?
Sure. Uh, my name is Will Fontaine. I'm a designer, uh, out of the Worcester office. Um, so, like, like the petition says, there was reporting, especially down at the end of flicker. The transformer feeding that, uh, that street was way up at the top, so, uh, we were installing one down at the bottom, but, uh, oh, the overhead department went out there, uh, saw this long span between these two poles. It was over two-hundred feet long, which we tried to keep them at a hundred-and-fifty feet, max. Um, so, we're, uh, just for safety reasons, and also, there were a lot of trees right there. We had to do some trimming. So, to, to alleviate the sag, uh, and then, to kind of keep the wires away from the trees there, we're, we want to install this pole, um, to, uh, help with the span and also help with, uh, uh, maintenance going forward with, uh, trees and then, uh, eliminating the flicker.
Okay. Uh, and this is a new pole. You're not replacing anything. It's a new pole set between the existing?
Uh, correct. We are replacing one or two of the poles on them, because they don't meet our height, uh, our current height standards for having primary on them.
Okay.
Um, but, those, those are existing already, so, uh, this is the only new one going in, in a new, new location.
Right, right, right. And you're going to replace the other two?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Um, had you had complaints from people in the neighborhood? Had National Grid had complaints to make company aware?
Uh, yes, so, that's, we, the flicker people were, um, you know, if everybody turns their lights on all at once, it, there's an inrush of power and a kind of, uh, it's not a very stable, uh, voltage, so, people's lights dim, and, I mean, it's, if you turn on all your appliances all at once, sometimes you, your breaker will go, or your, some of the lights will go down for a second, and then, they come back up. So, there was an excessive amount of complaints about that, so, we, we had to do something.
All right. Great. Thank you. Um, Councilor Frida, do you have any questions?
Uh, are these poles on, uh, private property or pub, or city property?
Uh, the, the ones being replaced are this, the, I think, I believe they're all in the public way. Um, I didn't, uh, there wasn't any indication they were on private property, so I'm assuming they were all in the public way.
Okay. Is it anything that's going to affect any of the neighbors?
Uh, no, they're all going in the, the same spots, so, it's, they're not moving-
Okay.
You know, any significant amount, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Council Brady?
Just a procedural question. Were all abutters notified of replacement of the new pole?
Um, of-
Yes? I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a procedural one, I wasn't quite sure.
Right. So, uh, abutters list for, abutters to abutters within a hundred feet went out, and all abutters were notified by certified mail.
Great. Good. Anything else? Anybody on the council? Do you have any questions for Mr. Fontaine? Uh, Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Mr. Fontaine, just a quick question. Are there any guy wires associated with either the new pole you're installing or the two you're replacing?
Uh, not, not for the one that we're, this new one we're putting in, um, because it's a fairly straight shot. There's, there's no real need for a guy wire. Um, I believe the one down at the end has a guy wire, uh, which we're transferring to the new pole, so that's, that shouldn't be moving. Um, but, that's a, it's a dead-end guy because of the, there's nothing to hold it going the other way, so obviously, we need to have something there. So, but, I believe it should just be transferred to the new pole, and it, it shouldn't be moving, so.
Okay. And you said that was on the last pole?
Uh, the last pole on the street, correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, great. Anybody else on the council? Nope? Okay. At this point, then, we'll just ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak in support or opposition to fifteen dash twenty-three. Uh, for a second time, we'll ask if there's any one in the audience who would like to, um, address petition fifteen twenty-three. And for the final time, is there anybody in the audience who, um, would like to weigh in on fifteen twenty-three? Seeing no one, um, I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are now going to hold the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for any member in the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come in the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering, uh, any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. There is nobody that has officially signed up, so I will ask, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at the public forum? If so, please come in the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, uh, I declare the public forum closed. We are now going to stand back in session and move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with money orders. C dash thirty-six, Madam Clerk?
C dash thirty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department Automotive Repair Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Okay. And C dash thirty-six will be referred to the Acting Chair of Finance this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
And C dash thirty-six will be given regular course. Moving on to C dash thirty-seven.
C dash thirty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests a transfer of funds to slash-from the following accounts. Park Maintenance PY, org object six seven zero nine zero 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 slash five two four one hundred, amount five thousand eight sixty-one and fifty-two cents. Regular Park Maintenance, org object six zero, uh, six seven zero two zero 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 slash five two four one hundred, amount two thousand one hundred nineteen and thirty-one cents. Forestry, um, I'm assuming that means expense PY, org slash object two nine four two zero 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 slash five four six three hundred, amount four thousand five hundred nineteen and seventeen cents. To Tree Survey Grant Account, uh, org object one four five one four nine zero slash five four six three hundred, amount twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. And C dash thirty-seven is also referred to the Acting Chairwoman of Finance.
Regular course, Mr. President.
And C dash thirty-seven has been given regular course. Council Frida?
Through the chair, to either the, the clerk or the finance, uh, clerk. What is the Tree Survey Grant Account? I don't think I've ever seen that before.
I'm not sure. I will find out and then get that answered.
I, I'd like to know before we put money into it, as I don't, I'm not familiar with it.
Thank you. I, I'm not familiar either, so we'll, we'll find out. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Uh, Council Brady?
Sorry. Just, just a clarification, because I haven't seen the, um, ORG slash object numbers before. Are those just account numbers?
Those are account numbers that they reference in Munis when they have a line item.
Okay.
Council Ardinger?
Yeah, also kind of a question, but, uh, the forestry expense, uh, past year account, is that the correct number? Because when I looked at the budget, it looked like it was the, it wasn't the correct number.
That's what the mayor's office provided in their cover. I can have, um, them re-look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curiosity. Thank you for bringing that up now. If it's, I said, thank you for bringing that up now. If it's not correct, we can amend it at the next, at the next meeting as well.
And that's for the forestry expense past year, right?
Yeah, forestry expense past year.
Okay.
Yep, the bottom one. Okay. All right. So C-37 has been given regular course and those work items will be taken care of by the chair. Okay. C-38, Madam Clerk.
Sorry?
It's okay.
Just finishing a note. There we go. C-38, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department Public Safety Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C-38 is referred to the Acting Chairwoman of Finance.
Regular course, please, Mr. President.
C-38 has been given regular course. C-39, the mayor's office has presented us with a suspension of the rules and emergency preamble, so I will first ask for the suspension of the rules. Is the Chairwoman of Finance ready to give a very brief description on why we're ready to suspend the rules? It's, it is a police matter, correct?
Yes, Mr. President. This has to do with the police budget, and I see the chief is here today, if anybody has any questions in particular. But there was, they got hit right before the holiday and in the month of December with some extra work, some extra overtime work, particularly an investigation and a, associated with a prisoner watch at a Worcester area hospital. They were not, so this is, basically their account is significantly underfunded at about $31,000, so they're looking for the emergency preamble. Unfortunately, this wasn't able to get onto the agenda prior to the agenda being set for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
So we're asking that the, we suspend the rules and address this issue this evening.
Okay. So first, I will ask to have a vote for the suspension of the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the rules have been suspended. And then we need another vote to accept this as an emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble signify in usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, this has been accepted as an emergency preamble as well. Madam Clerk, I will ask you to read the communication and then it will be referred to the, to the Acting Chairwoman of Finance.
C-39, suspension of the rules, emergency preamble. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Police Department Emergency Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
Okay. And C-39 is referred to the Chairwoman of Finance.
Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we approve this this evening. I do have a letter from the police chief to the mayor's office, I believe I can read it in, just to make sure everybody is on board and aware of what we just discussed. This is from Police Chief Aaron Kennedy to Dean Mayor Mazzarella. Much like our last request, several factors contributing to inordinate high spikes in overtime demands, primarily short staffing levels, military leave, extended hospital, prisoner watch over the holiday weekend, along with after-hours criminal investigations and extended injury leave, have given rise to this request for $250,000 in additional emergency overtime. They state, goes on to further say that they were fine up until the December holiday week. During that time, they encountered lengthy criminal investigation associated with a prisoner watch at the Worcester area hospital for the entire holiday weekend until court reopened. The, this investigation is getting more and more complex and time-consuming. As a police department, we must consider the safety of the public and liability issue for the city itself. Their live balance at this point is $31,630.50 and some change. So I, it would be my recommendation that we grant this order and I'd ask you to check with the other member of the committee.
Counsel Angelini.
I'd be in favor of this as well, Mr. President. I mean, obviously, we need the police to be at work and they need to be paid. We certainly have that responsibility to ensure they're paid promptly, so I would be supporting this as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-39. Is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
I certainly support this. I think we all know what the police department has been up against and the amount of overtime and lack of staff, which really necessitates a lot of overtime. But I think it, I hope the Finance Committee is taking note of all these overtime accounts. We say this every year. I think the budget, when it comes to budget time, I think it needs to be looked at. Instead of doing this every week, the department had us to come in and ask for more money. I think there needs to be more money in the budget. We know realistically what it costs. I think, you know, it's really time to look at it. Instead of having emergency preambles, having them worry about not having enough money for public safety, I think the budget needs to be increased and don't do it so that the budget looks like it's less money and then we keep putting money in. So I think it's just got to be looked at. Better way to do this, and I think it's got to be addressed at the budget time. And I hope the Finance Committee has taken note of that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on C-39? All those in favor of granting C-39 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-39 has been granted. Madam Chair, do you have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $250,000 be made to the Police Department Emergency Overtime Account, the same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-39 has been adopted. Moving on to communications from the mayor continued under appointments. Madam Clerk.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the appointment of James Chambers, 63 Jamestown Road, Leominster, Mass., to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15, 2026.
And this appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Mr. President, could we have regular course? And I would ask that we schedule a, an interview of Mr. Chambers and perhaps we can request a copy of his resume.
Okay. All right. So that will be given regular course and Madam Clerk, you will set up that interview.
Uh huh.
Okay. And moving on to petitions first time on the agenda, 16-23.
16-23, Caitlin Hoffman, City Clerk, requests a vote to accept the election calendar for the 2023 municipal elections. Calendar as attached.
And 16-23 is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
16-23 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the city council, beginning with the financial report. Madam Chair, are you ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. Our beginning balances of July 1, 2022, was $20,675,366.35. We have seen interest earnings, an increase of $61,549.98. The total additions, after the addition, would be $20,736,916.33. We have spent to date, and this is also pending, the spending of the $250,000 that we allotted for tonight. An additional other pending expenditures would bring us to a total expenditure so far of $3,831,287.30. And it would leave us, after those reductions, with a total balance of $16,905,629.30. And that would be the financial report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nicely done. Any questions regarding, comments regarding the financial report? Seeing none, moving on to items under Finance with C-34. Madam Chair, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is C-34. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $75,000 be made to the Election and Registration Account, the same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. We received a breakdown from our city clerk in a letter to Dean Mazzarella. I am respectfully requesting an additional appropriation of $75,000 to the Election Registration Account. Currently, the balance of the Election and Registration Account is $97. We have almost finalized paying the bills from the November 8, 2022 election. Due to the extra weeks of early voting, the large quantity of ballots mailed and the cities, mailed at the city's expense, additional police presence required and the requirement of new bilingual signage and election materials and software we have spent through our budget for this fiscal year. As we close out these fees and plan for the future census, contractual obligations, computer upgrade requirements, municipal election and confirmation card notices, we will not be able to cover the estimated fees. As such, I am respectfully requesting the additional appropriation to cover these expenses. Any excess will be given back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year as free cash. As an overview of anticipated costs, please see the following. Census mailing, $9,000. Census postage, $4,500. Confirmation card mailing, $9,000. Confirmation card postage, $4,500. Contractual obligation for voter equipment, $6,000. Mandated RTS upgrade for election equipment, $5,000. Additional bilingual signage for municipal elections, $7,000. Toner for election printer, $1,200. Street listing, $7,000. Envelope supplies for voter registration, $3,000. Shredding company cost, $2,000. Election worker assistance to file 10,000 censuses at, census, sensai perhaps?
Sensai.
As return, $15,000. Safety net in case of inflation is $1,800. For a total of $7,500. The numbers above reflect costs associated with last year's quotations and fees. Thank you for your time and consideration with this request. And it's signed Caitlin Hoffman of the City Clerk from the City of Leominster. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we agree to make this appropriation and I'd ask you to check with the third member of the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Counsel Angelini.
Mr. President, through the chair, may I pose a question to our learned clerk?
Sure.
Madam Clerk, these expenditures that you have listed here and the extended hours that we must remain open under this mandate from Boston, I need to help. Is any of this money reimbursed through the city?
Eventually, we get a little bit back. So for the entire set of fall, I anticipate we'll see about $12,000 next fall.
$12,000 out of approximately $75,000 in expenses?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I agree with my thought.
To grant? Okay. All right. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-34. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-34 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-34 has been granted as the chairman of an order.
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $75,000 be made to the Election and Registration Account, the same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-34 has been adopted. Nice work, pinch hitting tonight for Counsel Badansy, who's under the weather this evening.
Let's hope he's feeling better and is back in his seat for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, C-35. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. I am indeed, Mr. President. C-35, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that the following section of the City of Leominster revised ordinance, Chapter 8, Fire Protection, Section 8-19, Fees for Ambulance Service. The chief of the fire department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city-in-town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 150% of such charges for basic life support, BLS service, and an additional 150% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS service. The chief of the fire department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same. And I note again the typo, so apparently someone copied and pasted. Be amended to the following. The chief of the fire department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city-in-town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 250% of such charges for basic life support, BLS service, and an additional 250% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS service. The chief of the fire department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same. Excuse me. Mr. President, we had, conducted a public hearing early this evening. I think the chief Sidlow and deputy chief Long were here and made a wonderful presentation. It's clearly a program that benefits residents and those that happen to be stricken ill in the City of Leominster and require the service. The program, according to the chief, pretty much funds itself in the fees collected. This is a wonderful program and it's my honor to recommend that we grant C-35. And I would ask you to check with the third member of my committee.
I'll tell them.
But I'm also going to recommend that we make a motion to change that.
For amendment? Okay. So you're making a motion to add that C into the word collect?
Correct.
Is that correct? Do we have a second on that? Counselor Cormier? All those in favor of amending this petition to put a C in the word collect? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, that has been amended. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll send this back to you as amended.
Yes, I would recommend that C-35 be granted as amended and I would ask you to check with the third.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant C-35. Is there any discussion? No? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-35 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-35 has been granted. Moving on to the Public Service Item, 15-23. Madam Chair, are you ready to report?
I am. 15-23, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, requests permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Cleveland Street hyphen National Grid to install one solely-owned pole on Cleveland Street, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet northeast of the centerline of the intersection of Lancaster Street and Cleveland Street. Install one pole on Cleveland Street to relieve sag on wires and upgrade infrastructure to eliminate reported flickering. Location approximately as shown on the plan is attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted for location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Cleveland Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, number 30652569, November 29, 2022. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings of each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Earlier this evening, we had a public hearing on this. Representative from National Grid spoke about the need to have this done. So, you know, it's addressing a public safety and also improving, it's a public safety hazard potentially, as well as improving service, electric service for people on that street. So I certainly support this and I would ask that you poll my committee, please.
Thank you very much. Counsel Frida?
I agree.
Counsel Brady?
I concur.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 15-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting, excuse, 15-23, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 15-23 has been granted. Moving on to new business. We have a few first readings of an ordinance and we'll begin with the first one, which is formally petitioned, 10-23. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We have an ordinance, first reading of a, of an ordinance, 10-23, which is Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot with requirements for lots in the rural residential zone. If we recall, the chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Souza, and the planning director were down a while back and apparently a typo had occurred in the zoning that was caught and merely asking us to fix that. So first reading will be in the year 2023. He had ordained the city council of the City of Leominster as follows. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended at section 22-40, dimensional and intensity standards in the table of regulations by deleting the number 130 in the column lot with in the rural residential district, are inserting it in its place the number 120. And I would recommend adoption of the first reading of the ordinance and I would ask you to check with another member of my committee this evening.
Counsel Cormier?
Counsel Deacon.
I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Counsel Deacon, I'm sorry.
I'm going to do.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, formally 10-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Arger.
Yea.
Counsel Angelini.
Yea.
Counsel Brady.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Deacon.
Yea.
Counsel Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to 11-23.
11-23, David Cormier, Ward 3 Consular, and Pauline Cormier, Ward 2 Consular, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled handicap parking spaces and add the following. Add three handicap parking spaces in the car. spaces, and add the following: Add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel nine, at the southernmost part of the lot. Again, this was an attempt by the council as aforementioned to try to find a solution to a shortage of handicap parking at Carter Park, and I think we all agreed that this wasn't a long-term solution, but it's certainly a good start, and I would, let me, I've got to read it, shall I? An ordinance in the year 2023, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Leominster as follows. Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled motor vehicles and traffic is hereby amended at section 13 dash 29 entitled handicap parking spaces by inserting the following phrase: Three reserved spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel 19, at the southernmost part of the lot. With that, Mr. President, I would recommend the adoption of the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with the third member of my committee this evening.
Counselor Deacon.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means, I'm sorry, of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 11 dash 23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with, I'm sorry, Counselor Frida.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate that this, I'm going to support this, but it still does not solve the initial problem of the gentleman that brought this forward to us. I really think maybe the City Property Committee can pursue looking into making some spaces in Carter Park. In a city this size, with the amount of activity that goes on at Carter Park, we have a gazebo, and we don't have a way for disabled people to get to that gazebo. And that is really, it's just ridiculous that we can't accommodate that, and that we can't have a couple of spaces on the street right outside that entrance to go to the gazebo. So if we can't do that, let's see if we can get some parking spaces inside. But we really need to accommodate some of the handicap, the older veterans on Veterans Day, the older people that, and not just the older people, the disabled people that go to the concerts during the summer. We promote it, but we got people that can't get to it. So I think we really need to look into this a little bit further. It was asked of us, this is a beginning, but I think we really need to look deeper into it. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, thank you. Counselor Cormier.
Just briefly, Mr. President, and to address, Counselor Frida, I agree with you. There needs to be a more permanent solution. As the council president and I spent a good portion of a morning over there, walking through it with the Disability Commission, with the police chief, this is just a stopgap, this is to get the handicap spots in a permanent area where they can stay. We also discussed, and we discussed with the Office of Emergency Management, of being able to shut down during special occasions that entire side road with barriers, and working with the Office of Emergency Management to shut that off, so it would be exclusively that entire side of the road for handicap parking and handicap accessible. So it's not, it's not a perfect solution, but it is, and I agree, we should look more into if there's anything else that we can do at Carter Park, but this is, it's, at least it gets us the handicap spots on the Main Street lot, and at least a plan in place for now to cover that part of Summer Street, so that there is dedicated handicap parking. So hopefully, we'll be able to get a little more work on, get a little bit more work done on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Through the chair of the Finance Clerk, I don't disagree, but these spots are not going to, those people aren't going to be able to get there. That's a long distance from the gazebo or the area where they have concerts. You're going to have more people packing that, using that handicap spot, which is fine, going into St. Leo's Church than you are anywhere else. That's what's going to happen, and that's fine to accommodate that. I'm not, I'm not taking that away. And I think it's great that the police will accommodate special events, but it's not just special events. There are people, the Spanish Center has something there occasionally. There are so many things that are being promoted to use that area. It's a park. It's a park. We have disability availability in Fornia Park and all the other parks that we've been doing. I just don't understand how we can't get parking spaces to get people into Carter Park to enjoy the park, for whatever reason. I don't care if they want to go in there and just sit and enjoy the park, but there's got to be a way that we can get people in there, and I'm going to suggest that the City Property or, I don't care who on this council does it, but I think we need to look into it, address it with the Historical Commission, with the DPW, and just pursue it so that we can get something done over there before summer. I agree.
Did I see your hand? You're welcome. Counselor Angelini, did I see your hand or no?
No.
I'll just add too that another possibility, and I'm not, no one knows if it's going to be successful or not, but, you know, the rail trail's also going to be extended. That area could change as well if they do any further development with the rail trail. So, you know, that's also possibly in the works as well. And then there could be changes there or accommodations to make with that too. So I think the mayor's going to have some kind of a plan with that shortly as well. Okay, so all those, actually, we're going to do this in a roll call vote, there's no more discussion, to grant 11 dash 23. Counselor Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
Now will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. 11 dash 23 has been, the first reading has been adopted. Moving on to 13 dash 23. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report on the third and final one?
13 dash 23. Excuse me. Officer Julio Ramos, Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13 dash 24 of the revised ordinances entitled motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter 13, Section 13 dash 24 of the revised ordinance entitled no parking on certain streets is hereby amending by inserting the following text: State Street, both sides from point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. Again, I'm not sure if we have another typo here. Hereby amending by inserting, I guess.
It was how it was submitted by Officer Julio Ramos. We don't touch what's submitted, come in, we won't edit.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay. Again, this was brought up, discussed at our December 12 meeting, and the problem exists that the Police Department is trying to resolve by installing these no parking signs. So I better read the ordinance again. I keep getting sidetracked. Be it ordained, in the year 2023, an ordinance be it ordained by the city council of the City of Leominster as follows: Amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter 13, Section 13 dash 34 of the revised ordinances entitled no parking on certain streets is hereby amended by inserting the following phrase: State Street, both sides from a point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. And again, my position would be that we grant the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with the second, the third member of my committee.
Counselor Deacon.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, which is formally petitioned, 13 dash 23. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frida.
Through the chair of the Legal Affairs Chair, would you consider giving this further time, one more time, and possibly having a Legal Affairs Subcommittee meeting? That letter that we got from the, email that we got from the woman who actually lives there was extremely articulate and had a lot of information in it. Maybe there are more people that like to offer an opinion. Maybe it would be a good idea to have a Subcommittee meeting and get some more information if we can on if there are difference of opinion there.
Well, thank you for that suggestion, Counselor. And I might say that I've been talking to one of the residents there for quite some time about this and get a pretty good feel for it, and I think between what I've heard from the Police Department and what I've heard from this particular resident and another, one thing that they'd like to see is these signs up as soon as possible. So if we were to take, if we were to further time this, we're just backing it up because we have this first reading, and at our next meeting, two weeks from now, would be the second reading of the ordinance, then the 20-day appeal period, and, you know, on and on and on. So this is an existing public safety issue, so I would be remiss if I didn't sort of follow the lead of the Police Traffic Division here and try to get these signs up as quickly as possible. I mean, we have a situation where school buses are having a hard time getting there, public safety vehicles, so it's something that they'd really like to see resolved as soon as possible. So I would, I would suggest that we adopt the first ordinance, first reading of the ordinance this evening and get this in motion so that we get closer to getting those signs erected.
Okay. Also, just a reminder too, we also have a public hearing on this that was closed. It's closed, so. So Counselor Frida.
Yeah, just to follow that up, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow that up, I noticed in the letter from Brian Riley that the issue has been raised. Who would have raised the issue?
Counselor Badanta asked me a question regarding the number of votes that a petition like this would take, and my response to him was always that it was a two-thirds vote. And so I said to him, if you have a difference of opinion, then I'm going to have to get an opinion from Brian Riley, and that is exactly what I did, and that's the opinion that you have right there.
Was this a citizen or is it a member of the council?
That asked for that? Counselor Badanta. He had asked me for that. So I did get that legal opinion because him and I had a difference of opinion. We had quite the argument over it, actually, and that's the answer to the question. And I, it's never been that way since I've been here, but that is what Brian Riley has opined, so. Okay, is there any other discussion on 13 dash 23? Counselor Brady.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in because I actually had a lengthy phone conversation with one of the residents there, and I'm just wondering if we can get the information a little more timely when the first reading and things like that, had we had that input, I think it would have, it would have answered a lot of questions I had, and it would have saved a lot of time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Response to Ward One Counselor, again, this came to me from the Police Department. Generally, as a Ward Counselor, I would be submitting this petition, and I probably would have been more aware of some of the background, and the background information sort of developed after the initial vote. And so one thing was, one thing was certainly clear by both, made clear by both the police and the residents that I spoke to, that time is of the essence on this, and the situation has gotten worse, so they'd like to see. In fact, I understand that a council had reached out to my constituent and suggested that the signs would be going up pretty soon, but obviously, we've got to get through these two readings and the appeal period before they can go up, so. But yeah, in the future, any failure from the Police Department, as you know, you're more than welcome to call the Traffic Division if you, you know, if you should require additional information.
Yeah, no, you know, we did have a public hearing, so the residents were informed, you know, I'm not going to get into that, but if you understand where I was going with that. Thank you, and I definitely will support that.
Okay, all set. Any other discussion on 13 dash 23? Counselor Frida.
I supported this the first time because I thought it was clearly a public safety issue, but then there were other things that seemed to enter into it, whether it was smoking issue, that if that woman is correct on the amount of issues that are going on in the rail trail that precipitated some of this, I think that there's a lot more that's working into this, this public safety issue since then, based on what she had mentioned in that email. I think there's a lot more going on, and that's why I thought getting more information certainly would be better before we get to the second reading. I understand it's a public safety issue. I would also request a voice vote on this, a roll call vote.
We have to, it's an ordinance. Yeah, yeah, okay. Counselor.
You know, just aside, I voted nay the first time this was here because I looked at it as a situation where you're moving one problem, the smoking, from one place to another place, and, you know, didn't think it would solve it. But after reading that letter and having a conversation, you know, for quite a few, quite a few minutes, I agree with the Counselor at large across from me, but, you know, there's a lot of issues down there, but they're not to be addressed, I don't think, right now because a lot of these things are police issues versus council issues, but getting those signs up right now will be imperative to helping stop some of the problems, not alleviate all of them. So I think we have to vote for it and approve this tonight.
Okay, all right. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. Like the Counselor across from me, I also voted no on this when it came before us because I thought, you know, further information would have, you know, helped us get a bigger, broader view of the whole situation. Again, I got the same emails, I had the same or similar conversations, so, but, but, you know, I think that there are a lot of police issues, and I also think that there are a lot of Riverside management issues that they have to take care of themselves. So I think, you know, initially, yeah, we can, you know, pass this, get the signs up, that will be a good first step in the right direction, I think, so I'm going to support this tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on 13 dash 23? Seeing none, the recommendation is to grant 13 dash 23, and we are going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. 13 dash 23's first reading has been adopted. Is there any other new business? Counselor Frida.
Yeah, I'm not sure how this could be done, but I'd like to see us have a meeting, just an informational meeting on some of the changes that have taken place, just in the mail that we get, stationary we're getting, a lot of the changes that are just being changed without any discussion from any of us. I'd just like to see us have an informational meeting, just to have a discussion on some of these things, because there's no other way for us to do it. So if we could just have whether Ways and Means can do it or just somebody that, not for anything, not for any controversial, anything controversial, just so that we can have some input into some of the things that are being done. I mean, it's, we're just changing things, and we're finding out along the way that, you know, things are changing, and all of a sudden, we're told they're changing. So I'd like to have, see if we can do something and just have a discussion.
Okay, we'll see what we can get together. Okay, is there any other new business? Counselor Brady.
On the unfunded mandate for the election costs and things, I'm wondering if we could pen a letter to both our state rep and our state senator, asking for their help in getting some funding for these unfunded mandates that the state keeps putting this down. It's getting more and more expensive for elections, and, you know, we're in a position, we could probably absorb some of that, but I'm thinking some of these smaller towns, it's going to put a really strain on their budget, if not impossible, because they don't have staff.
May I answer?
Yeah, sure.
So I've actually had discussions with Representative Higgins and Senator Cronin on this. They both agree that they like this unfunded mandate, and they will work their hardest to get us more money, and that's about where that left me. I have another meeting with Natalie this month to discuss it further because it's expensive. We have a lobby group, a lobbyist group, as a clerks, as a whole for the state, and we've been lobbying against some of the unfunded mandate because it's very expensive, especially when it's so many weeks and you can't.
Can we, can we ask the comptroller to generate an invoice and send it to the state? Whether they'll pay it or not? Why not? Get it started.
They won't do it.
Why don't we initiate a suit against them? I'm, I'm being very serious.
That's something that the mayor would have to, he'd have to initiate that.
But there has been efforts to talk to the reps about it. It just hasn't been a positive outcome with that, unfortunately.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, any old business? We do have the appointment of the legal counsel, which I know usually at every organizational meeting kind of lingers for a bit. We have until February 1st. Madam Clerk, have you had any success with it?
Thank you, Mr.
Madam, sorry, to the Chair of Legal Affairs, any success with Attorney Madouse?
I, I actually, thank you, Mr. President. I actually left a voice message with Attorney Madouse's office on Friday. It was a little bit late in the day, and unfortunately, I was tied up and didn't get back to my office to see if he's called in tonight. So we do have a little bit of time. I'm just asking to give me, to the next meeting, just so that I can speak with him. I'm sure, I'm sure he's on board when we last spoke. I'm sure he's going to accept it, and I think he expected that it was a two-year appointment. I just want to talk to him just quickly, or just get the okay from him personally, and then I'll report that in. So if I can just get one further date on that, I'll, I'll make sure I take care of it this week.
Okay. So that Clerk, Madam Clerk can go on the next agenda as well, and their old business. Do we have any other old business? Seeing nothing, anything under the community calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Angelini, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, do you want to second it? Okay. All those in favor of adjournment signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, I'm sorry, eight to zero, eight to zero, we are adjourned. Surprised that's the first time I made that mistake tonight. I was expecting to do it all night.